Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 12, 2025. And this special meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Graham, presiding. Also present are City Council President Deb Rule, Councillors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the Presiding Officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel. Serving Sergeant Barnes for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Coon. If everyone will please stand, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since it's not an overwhelming audience, I was going to not take any public comment because I assume many people are here for item number two under New Business. But since it is such a meager group tonight, I will entertain some public comment. Just for the public, this is item number two is a discussion item tonight. We'll try to get the council's perspective. And then I intend to bring back an ordinance at our meeting next week where we will take a public comment on the changes. But as we proceed with the general public comment portion of the meeting, if you wish to speak and haven't completed a sign up form, please do so and hand it and sorry, staff, I threw you a curve ball there. Hand it to a staff member at the back of the room. General comment time provides an opportunity for members of the public in attendance to address the mayor and council regarding items on this evening's agenda under the consent or older new business. For the purpose of general forum, you are welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to the city of Sandpoint, not including on the agenda and not anticipated or scheduled for future public hearings. Please note that council cannot take testimony on any planning or land use matter outside of an official hearing. I'd like to make everyone aware, the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted just outside the chamber entry doors. And in summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly or disruptive. Please no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs. Public comment time is for comments only, no questions or debate. You are welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. This is the only general public comment time that will be offered this evening. Those in attendance remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes and there will be no sharing of time or gifted time. With that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I believe people are signing up right now.
Okay. We'll give everyone just a moment. Right, right over here. Sorry. Thanks. That's the Police Chief Corey Coon, if you don't know who he is. Great.
Mr. Mayor, first we have Heather.
Yes, Heather, just up to the microphone. Just tell us your name and whether you reside in the city or not.
Hi, I'm Heather Haggard, and I live outside of the city.
Okay.
But in Bonners County. I'm a little nervous, so I'm not going to try to like cry. I am a disabled veteran. I'm a veteran's widow. And I am a woman that uses the YMCA. And I was in the YMCA when the gentleman was there. I am also a woman who has been sexually assaulted in what is considered a safe space when I was in active duty military and I was 21 years old, right after I was told my husband was killed. This is a really big emotional thing for me when I feel like I'm going into somewhere that should be a safe space for me, that I will be in different states of undress to completely naked. And I should be given the ability to consent to anybody that sees my body or me in that situation. I also think that we are teaching young girls to not believe when they feel unsafe. I was told that this man that sexually assaulted me was a safe man. I was told that this man should take me at home after I was told my husband was guilt. Sorry. And that man decided to take advantage of the situation. I was told not to believe what I knew to be true. And that's what we are telling women when they go into their spaces that are designated for women. And we are telling them that someone who does not feel like a man is a woman. When we tell them that because they decide to dress like a woman or wear makeup like a woman, that they are a woman and we should allow them into our safe spaces and that we should be okay with them seeing us in different states of undress. That is not okay. That is not fair to me. That is not fair to young girls. That is teaching a generation of little girls to not believe what they know is true, what we are given by God to keep us safe, which is our fear response because we're told that we're bigots. We're told that they're transphobic. We're told that we're wrong when we step up and say, this is a man and he should not be in my space. Good men stay out so that bad men stand out. Men that come into women's spaces that are not supposed to be there.
I could just wrap up your comments.
Or bad men. That's what I have to say.
Thanks for sharing your comments.
Mr. Mayor, we have Suzanne Tabern.
Good evening, Ms. Tabern.
Good evening. I am a member of the YMCA temporarily.
Are you a city resident?
A city resident.
Thank you.
So I'm here today to speak in support of maintaining women's bathrooms and locker rooms as female-only spaces. This isn't about discrimination. This is about our safety, our privacy, and it's about common sense. Women and girls have fought hard for protected spaces where we can feel safe and maintain our dignity. Allowing biological males into those spaces, even if they identify as a woman undermines these protections and creates serious safety concerns. There are countless examples across the country of women and girls feeling uncomfortable, frightened, or even harmed because of policies that open bathrooms and changing areas to anyone based on gender identity. We shouldn't have to sacrifice our safety or privacy to make a political point. Biological differences are real. A man identifying as a woman does not make him a female. Recognizing that reality isn't hateful, it's honest. Women deserve spaces that are truly ours, just like men do. I urge the council to put women's safety first by keeping public bathrooms and locker rooms designated by biological sex, not gender identity. This approach respects everyone's rights while ensuring that women and girls remain protected in vulnerable settings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan.
Mr. Mayor, we have Carl Fish.
Good evening, Carl.
Good evening. My name is Carl Fish. I'm a city of Sandpoint resident. I've been gratefully working and living in Sandpoint since 2007, and I believe this code needs to be updated to reflect the needs of our community. Our community needs secure facilities. I attend a group exercise class at the YMCA weekly. You might consider me a minority in that class. It's the refit dance class and session pretty much as we speak right now. I'm the only man in that class. The rest are about a dozen women, all led by my wife, the class instructor, employed by the YMCA. You might see why locker room security is an issue of most importance. Those are my friends. They need to be safe. Equally important is to ensure that everybody's welcome in this community and they have the right to be safe in this community. Our city code can be updated to allow this safety. It's not discrimination. And our businesses need to have the freedom to secure their facilities without the implication of facing legal consequences. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Carl.
We have Andrea Marcaccio.
Good evening, Andrea.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Marcaccio. I am a city resident, and I'm reading a statement on behalf of the Sandpoint Alliance for Equality. Before we formed Safe to Elevate All Voices, Include All the Community, and Celebrate Pride Within the Limits of This Great City, before we were here to educate and advocate, the city of Sandpoint unanimously passed a non-discrimination ordinance to protect the equal rights of all. They did this because that bipartisan council knew that to single out any particular persons to protect some and not others was to risk the safety of citizens, the ability of our businesses to prosper, and the economic stability of the entire community. Study after study shows the same data. In over 400 cities using similar language in their NDOs, no increased risk to safety or criminal harm has occurred as a result of the ordinance. The data also tells us that when citizens are required to use facilities other than those they choose for their safety, they're experienced significantly more harassment, discrimination, and violence. To reverse the existing NDO in Sandpoint is not a technicality of jurisdiction. It is to knowingly, willingly, put your citizens in harm's way. It is to be held hostage to the fear, prejudice, and intolerance we've seen online in the past few days. It is to react hastily to an issue that requires careful collaborative decision-making. If it were the safety of citizens and not the promise of votes or allegiances at the heart of this rapid response to change the NDO, our community would be invited to thoughtful discourse on what language and protections in our ordinances best serve all of us because we all want the same thing, safety, prosperity, and freedom. We'd also like a gym. The YMCA has served our community beyond its walls. They are home to our incredible high school swim team. They are the only public pool in town. They offer shelter and safety and space to a myriad of students who go there after school, to seniors who enjoy their diverse programs, to mothers who need childcare, to injured who need PT. They offer affordable access to all. They give jobs to 80 families in our community. Their policies reflect not just our NDO, but their commitment to values we share, generosity, inclusion, and equality. To be clear, this attack on this single organization that has so willingly served our community is to risk losing the YMCA altogether. And while this alone would be economically and socially devastating in our town, it is only the first business that will be forced out of our community.
Andrea, if you could wrap it up. Thanks.
Thank you. Existing business owners and organizations will be put at an undue legal and financial risk. Others will simply decline to pursue growth or expand to Sandpoint. If the mayor is committed to his focus of aligning the city with the needs of its residents and businesses, if the council is to, in service of the prosperity, sustainability, and safety of all its citizens, we believe it's imperative to uphold the current non-discrimination ordinance, to invite dialogue and due process should changes be considered, and to be accountable to the facts and data in the process.
Thanks for your comments, Andrea.
Mr. Mayor, we have Stuart Howell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council. Good evening, Mr. Howell. Can you state if you're a resident or not?
Yes, I'm a resident, have been for years, and thank you for seeing me again. Last time we spoke, it was about the graffiti removal. You asked me if I volunteered. I said yes. And should you be willing to fund such an operation? Like to hand in paperwork on that? That's okay? We've got both for a sandblasting machine and the compressor and the medium. I'm willing to volunteer. I have one other person who will volunteer. So if you'll fund it, we'll get it removed.
Thanks for your offer. I love solutions. We'll have to work on that sidebar.
Absolutely. The other thing is this whole, the brouhaha at the YMCA. I think this is similar to the COVID thing where it's all based on a fraudulent premise. And I just would like you and the rest of the city council to look at what that non-discrimination law that's currently on the books is based on. I don't believe the argument that is based on holds water at its core. Same way as the argument for there being a health emergency crisis that facilitated all of the brouhaha we went through on COVID was all based on a fraudulent hoax of a pandemic, which was really exaggerated for financial and other control reasons. I think that's at the base of this. And I think if you're really looking to protect the citizens of Sandpoint, especially the young women, this just needs to be just run out of town on a rail, so to speak. I think I would urge you to just look at the nature of the premise that it's based on, which is that these are women because they choose to say they are. That is not the case, and I think this needs to be nipped in the bud. Sandpoint is a great place for us to stand up and say, no, not on our watch, not in our town, our young people, our girls. It's just not okay. I just would urge you to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Stuart.
Mr. Mayor, we have Matthew Shubin.
Good evening, Matthew.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you guys. I do not live in city resident. I'm over in Ponder Point. I like to put forth the argument that I do not believe it is possible for anybody to think they're the opposite gender than what they were born with. My argument actually comes from the transgendered community when they say that nobody knows what somebody else feels like. We don't know how they feel, and that's actually the premise of my argument. And I tried to be open-minded and self-reflect on it. And so I kind of thought like, hey, how about myself? How much of a man do I feel when I wake up in the morning? And I would ask you guys to reflect on that also. And I don't think the answer is anything. I don't feel any more of a man or less of a man on any given day. I just feel like myself. And I would argue that that would be the same for everybody. So for anybody to claim that they are somebody else or of opposite gender, I don't think that's possible because you do not know how an opposite gender feels unless you're planning on stereotyping them. So you could be a masculine female or a feminine male by all means, as feminine as you want to be. But that doesn't mean that you are that gender. So I feel that it is discriminating against many women when you allow somebody of the opposite gender to go into a locker room designed to protect women. And I feel like this is going to create an unintended consequence because it is now publicized and women before said that it was safe for them or whatever. But I, man, I have an 11-year-old daughter. I have a wife. If all it takes is for me to declare myself a woman, to go in there and ensure that they are safe, what's stopping me from doing that? I mean, I don't have any pride. I don't care. I can say I'm a woman and, but I assure you, my family will be safe. And if there's a male, and to my best, my knowledge, this dude that's inside the girl's locker room actually has a girlfriend, so he's sexually attracted to women. I got a wife and a daughter in there, like, and like the woman before me said, this is the only pool within city limits. So one of the main reasons I'm part of the YMCA is so we can enjoy this pool throughout the winter. We need winter activities here. But gosh darn, guys, we need to protect our little ones. So I mean, if that's making a coed locker room within it where people could have that choice, let's figure something like that out. I feel like the community would get behind that because like, we don't hate anybody. We just love the people that we love, and we want to make sure everyone's protected. So I think that's all I got. But yeah, thanks for your time.
Thanks for your comments, Matthew.
We have Dennis Hook.
Good evening, Mr. Hook.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come up and speak. Last time I was here, I had the pleasure of watching all of you stand up to Avril Hospitality, a company that stands to offer some benefits to our community. But you were here to make sure that the citizens' concerns were heard and that their rights were protected. And that was an honor for me to stand here and watch. And the reason I'm being here tonight is that I hope that you will approach this same subject with that same tenacity. Women have a right to privacy, and that privacy should not be violated and tossed aside for a man. Why do women have to cite sexual and domestic violence to justify single-sex spaces? Shouldn't the phrase, "I don't want to share a changing room with a man," be enough? I also don't see that asking patrons to use a facility in a prescribed manner constitutes a denial of service or a refusal of facility use. Lastly, I would just like to say that after sitting here through the last meeting, I honestly admire and appreciate all of your dedication to this town and the service to this community. You have a wherewithal to do a job that I do not possess, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hook.
We have Stephen Reese.
Good evening, Mr. Peter. I'm Stephen Reese, a member of the YMCA. I am a resident of Bonner County. When I was in the 10th grade, I took a biology class. In that class, I learned about chromosomes, X chromosomes and Y chromosomes. In college, I took that biology class again as a part of the minimal requirements for graduation. The science had not changed. In recent decades, we've heard a lot about following the science. Let's follow the science. We're going to hear that with respect to the pandemic. We heard it with respect to climate change. Human females have two X chromosomes. Human males have an X chromosome and a Y chromosome. When a female produces an egg, it has one X chromosome in it. The male produces sperm to fertilize that egg. Some of the sperm have X chromosomes. Some of them have Y chromosomes. Depending upon which sperm reaches the egg and fertilizes it, that determines the gender of that fetus. When the doctor delivers a baby, he doesn't arbitrarily assign a gender to that, to that baby. That baby comes out with female genitalia if it has two X chromosomes. It comes out with male genitalia if it has an X and a Y chromosome. This is the science. Today, we have people who ignore this very basic science and want to live in a fantasy that is not based on this reality. We have a branch of science that can help people like that. That branch of science is called psychology. These are people who identify in something that is not real. It doesn't matter if they identify as women or cats or penguins. It is a non-reality, and they need help. We don't allow people who identify as penguins to enter the penguin exhibit at the zoo, nor should we identify or allow, rather, men who identify as women into women's private spaces. I really hope this city council will exercise some common sense, protect our women and girls from men who are fixated on an alternate reality and think they are women. They need counseling, not accommodation. Seems to me if you're trying to craft a non-discriminatory ordinance, it can be done simply. We have spaces that are unisex bathrooms. Men or women can go in there, but the difference is they can lock the door and expect privacy. In the case of the YMCA where you have open showers, at least this is the way it is in the men's side, I'm presuming the women's is much the same, open showers, open locker rooms, everybody's mingling around together, there is no expectation of privacy there, and women should not have to be subject to having men in their private spaces. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Reese.
We have Meredith Bennett.
Good evening, Meredith.
Good evening. So yes, I'm Meredith Bennett. I am a resident of Bonner County. I'm neither homophobic nor transphobic. In fact, I've supported and attended pride parades since I was eight years old. I am, however, deeply concerned and fearful of this situation. I am someone who has experienced harassment in the form of attempted rape twice in my life while frequenting businesses that did not have penis-free spaces for women. I'm not here to debate whether or not trans women are women. I am here deeply concerned about protecting penis-free spaces for women. I have a daughter who, since she was old enough to talk, has been kind of afraid to go into public restrooms. And she always asks me, Mom, like, am I safe? Are there, and she always asks, like, and I don't talk about this with her, but she always asks, like, are there any men in here? Are there any, are there any men in here? And of course, I'm not, I'm not getting into gender ideology with her. She's very young. But I do love that Sandpoint is a safe place for women and children. That is the thing I love most about this town. And I want to preserve that and protect that. And I guess I just ask, what are, what are you going to do to continue to ensure that this remains a safe place for women and children? And I, I know that this is challenging, and we all have empathy, and it's a really nuanced situation. But I think preserving penis-free spaces for women where you are vulnerable and undressed and changing and showering, I just think it's really important that we continue to have penis-free spaces for women. So yeah, I guess that's just my question to you all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Meredith.
Mr. Mayor, this time no one else has signed up, and no one has their hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. That will conclude the public comment period of the meeting. Okay, first we'll take up old unfinished business with the Bridge Street retaining wall project. Any updates from staff before council enters into any discussion or has questions?
I do have an update, and I'll just share my screen.
Ali Ellis, Public Works Director.
Thanks, Ali Ellis, Public Works Director, as I'm sharing my screen here. We have two staff updates, two staff updates from council tonight. The first from our community development director, Jason Walker, and then the second from Legal. And I've got, if I can figure out how to share my screen, I have a graphic here that might help just summarize our discussion from last week and where we left off. So briefly to remind council where we left off last week, and for the public who may not be aware, we have a project here at First and Bridge Street where we are planning to remove that retaining wall along Bridge Street and infill with wider sidewalk. Here's the project location, and the project is in red. So this project seeks to eliminate those pile, that pile wall, build a new retaining wall, and install wider sidewalk along Bridge Street. This project came about after a land swap that the city entered into. So this property is shown in red. The red outlines the private property. In the east side along the property, there's an existing easement that has been platted. The blue area is the project that we are discussing again tonight, which again is relocating a retaining wall. relocating a retaining wall, building a sidewalk, and engaging with a contractor to perform this work. There are other pieces to this land swap. The portion in yellow is not intended to be acted upon at this time. So in the yellow area, it is shown to remove access to Gunning's Alley and construct a wall. At this time, the city is not seeking to act on that part of the project. Rather, the contractor would cut that access off in the future when they come forward with their building permit. So just a quick update and highlight from where we left off last week. And with that, I'll hand things over to Jason Walker.
Thanks, Holly. This visual is really helpful, too. First, I just want to thank council for giving myself and planning staff a little bit of time.
Jason, can you introduce yourself?
I'm Jason Walker, Planning and Community Development Director. Last week, I asked if you could give us a little bit of time to do some outreach with property owner. Immediately the next morning, we did leave a voicemail, and he called us back. And I say us, Bill was in the room when he called, which is convenient. Bill's been, Bill, our city planner, has been involved in this previous meetings with this developer in the past. And I am pleased to say that the main question we were trying to get to was in response to Councilwoman Duquette's question about pedestrian bicycle access to Farmers Landing. The developer started off by acknowledging that he understood that in our previous pre-application meeting from April of this year, a takeaway that he got from that was that there are indeed challenges with the current proposal for this site with regards to pedestrian bicycle access. Furthermore, he expressed some openness to the idea of possibly rededicating some of this right-of-way or expanding the access easement to assure improved pedestrian bicycle and possibly even vehicular access to Farmers Landing in future site plans for this project. I told you last week that this developer had come in and requested a pre-act meeting. That's actually true. Their local representative was in City Hall last Monday. We have not scheduled a pre-act meeting for the next round of review for this project. And just for the public as well, no permit application has actually ever been submitted for for this site. There have just been preliminary concepts presented over five years now, and no actual application to develop the site. I also want to correct the record. Last Wednesday, I implied, I mentioned, I misstated that the money we are looking at spending on this project is city money. That money was set aside for a security bond specifically for work related to improvements in this location. So I just want to correct that as well. The $385,000 for that bond going towards this project is not able to be used for any other project. After the discussion with the developer and with Bill and myself, we feel quite comfortable that in the site plan review process that will eventually take place for this property, there will be ample opportunity to improve pedestrian access, perhaps beyond what we see here. And what you see here is a four-foot north-south easement along the east side of this property, which was, I believe, intended to be the landing for a staircase down to the boardwalk that at some future date would be constructed by the city using some of the funds that were outside of the security bond also handed over to the city back in 2022. $75,000 cash was given to the city to cover approximately half the cost of that future staircase, with the idea being we would mirror the staircase that exists on the south side of Bridge Street, connecting Bridge Street to the pedestrian boardwalk. So after that conversation, after additional conversations with the team here, I'm comfortable and confident encouraging you to approve this construction contract tonight. I do believe it's been seven years this February since the fire at this location, and seven years since Sandpoint residents have had adequate, you know, up-to-standard pedestrian access to city beach. I think it's really important that we assure that so that in the future, not knowing with any certainty when this development might progress, I think it's the right time to undertake this improvement. I know there probably are some questions about the contract from the land swap and some other things, but from the planning team's perspective, it's the right time to do this. Pedestrian access is essential, and it probably couldn't get any worse than it is today. So let's make it better. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Director Walker. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Holly, could you, I think last Wednesday, when we were in chambers, you gave us a timeline for this project. Could you just briefly touch upon it? I think we were trying to get it done soon, but if you could just educate us on that timeline, that'd help.
Yes, absolutely. The contractor intends to start this project in December, and they would be working as weather allows through the winter. So snow might stop their work, but they have to have the project done before the end of March. So the intention would be that this sidewalk is widened along Bridge Street, providing safer access for pedestrians prior to the start of the busier summer season.
And one final question. To mobilize them, how much work, how much time, if the council, and I'm not assuming they will, but if we gave a yes vote, what's the duration to mobilize them and get them started to do construction?
Their plan is to be out there December 1 and to be mobilized. So they've already, ahead of a notice to proceed, had started on their engineering design documents so that they could mob and be onsite and start working December 1. There was a comment last week about the opportunities to align this project with the downtown revitalization project on First Avenue. We did consider and look at, are there any opportunities to save on mobilization, have one contractor out there? Is there a risk of rework? And ultimately, there was not an opportunity to save mobilization. A contractor who's going to be building a wall and go vertical is a very different contractor than who's going to be doing earthwork and site work. So we're not seeing that opportunity to save mobilization costs. There's also not an overlap with the downtown revitalization project. You can see that this project is infilling where there's no sidewalk today. Opportunities to do anything else in that area of right-of-way are really minimal. Right next to the private property and right-of-way line is often sidewalk.
Thank you.
Any other council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
First off, I want to say thanks to staff for all the hard work on this. My reservations on this project have nothing to do with staff's performance. The staff has done a great job, and also total confidence in the bidding procedure. And, you know, I have no reason to believe that any of the companies that bid on this project did so in bad faith. I am a little concerned that the lowest bid that we got is higher than the amount of the bond that we have for this, and that it's not the entire project. Honestly, I was sort of expecting this to come back at our next meeting as we discussed at the last meeting. So I still have some questions that I'd like to work through with staff if council would be willing to give me another week on this.
Any other council questions, if not an entertaining motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ooh, tie goes the lady.
Sorry. You're so quiet.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
I also was prepared for having this decision next week. You had already given us that time. I too would appreciate that time, especially with the new information. Yeah, I have questions that I wasn't prepared to get answers to tonight. So for my brain to focus on all of this, I would like to have another week as well, since you approved that last time.
Councilman Spiro.
Thank you. With the new information, I do appreciate that. I feel comfortable moving forward. But Councilman Schreiber, I would, if you don't mind letting us know which questions or concerns you think that staff would be able to give you. Is that an appropriate time right now?
I believe our... I think Councilman Schreiber is asking for a little bit of a confidential legal opinion on a couple of certain issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dick.
Holly, given the short timeframe here, if we do push this back another week and we were to accept the bid next week, are we still able to get started on the first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll just say, I'm also comfortable. I would love to get that sidewalk fixed and get it to where it needs to be, as Rebecca Holland lovingly calls it "confunction junction." It is dangerous, and I'd love to move forward as fast as possible, but I'm certainly open to giving you guys another week.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Howard.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the approval of the contract to Big Sky Corporation in the amount of $396,672.50 for the Bridge Street retaining wall.
Is there a motion by Howard? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
I move to postpone this item to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
The motion to postpone this item to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, Wednesday, November 19th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dick. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councilor Dick?
Yes.
Councilor Duquette?
Yes.
Councilor Spiro?
Yes.
Councilor Rule?
Yes.
Councilor Howard?
No.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we will move on to new business and a discussion regarding the city code 5 to 10 discrimination prohibited. Council members, I brought this on the agenda as a discussion item. The events over the last few weeks have resulted in the city putting, in our current ordinance, putting us in a situation of a legal and cultural debate that exceeds far beyond our municipal authority, or I would argue the intent of the nondiscrimination ordinance. I would love to hear your comments, thoughts, implied consent, concerns after this discussion and for next week's council meeting. I intend to bring forward an ordinance that will modify our current 5 to 10 to simply reflect established federal civil rights law and state law and to remove the city from an area of regulation that is already governed by the United States Supreme Court and Congress and the state of Idaho. In my opinion, the city has no legal power to enforce or regulate these issues. And we do have federal and state law to respond to any discrimination activities. Currently, I see us being moved into a position where we have potential for costly litigation and public division and administrative confusion for both residents and businesses. So with that, I would open this up to any council discussion on the item, if you have any. Don't feel compelled to. As I mentioned, I will be bringing back an ordinance next week to actuate and mirror federal civil rights law and state civil rights laws.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say...
Duquette, you recognize?
Along those lines, there are no federal laws explicitly prohibiting transgendered individuals from using public showers according to their gender identity. So if we are following the federal law, it's there. That's what it says. I looked that up today. I don't know. If there was a unanimous vote at one time, I guess I wonder where the rest of the public was. It makes it hard to discuss something if we don't have that discourse and figure things out. So I don't, I don't know. Philosophically, it's, ideologically, it's, I think, beyond all of us to say. I don't know. Like I said, I think we are following federal law with our idea.
Yeah, I think the difference is we have inserted ourselves as the arbiter and through the misdemeanor and the human rights group that would be formed if there is an alleged violation, and I don't see that as a local responsibility. I think we've got federal laws that clarify that and provide opportunities for anyone who is offended or discriminated against. Any other council discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Howard.
So this is a political hot potato. I think we all have different opinions and thoughts on it, and so I will try my utmost to be careful. I will say this. I'm not an expert. I'm not a psychologist. I don't understand a man thinking they're a woman. But that said, I went back, I asked the question a little bit differently. I said, is there a law in the state of Idaho that allows a biological male to enter female spaces? There is no law in the state of Idaho that says that's acceptable, okay? It says the Idaho law currently, and I'll talk about the two laws on the book, currently includes legislation that requires individuals in certain multi-occupancy facilities, such as the Y, to use those aligned with their biological sex, not their gender identity. Therefore, laws do not generally allow transgender males to occupy female changing rooms in covered entities. Okay, so that's the general position of the state of Idaho. There are also two laws on the books. One that prohibits, specifically prohibits in government buildings, transgender males using female spaces. There is also a second law that says it is not allowed in universities and public schools. So I can take that as a pretty strong position of what the state of Idaho believes. I don't have to think about what does Sandpoint believe, but the bigger state that we live in seems to be pretty clear on this topic. And so I think whatever we do, we have to align to the philosophy of the state of Idaho and follow suit. I'm worried that your ordinance does nothing to help the citizens in this chamber tonight. I think it abdicates the responsibility of protecting the women that feel vulnerable in those spaces. So again, I'm just looking to the state and what the state believes and what the state has passed. And there is protections there, and I think we ought to go find a way to protect our women.
Councilman Howard, just for clarification, maybe I explained it improperly. My intent is to bring forward an ordinance that mirrors state law.
Thank you.
And mirrors federal law.
Thank you. That's clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dick.
I concur with Councilor Howard. I think the way I thought about this was we need to move to protect women, children, and the most vulnerable. With that said, a couple of things came to light as I was going through the research process and calling everybody. It sounds like we've got new locker rooms or some changing areas next to the pool that... Or maybe you could fill us in a little bit about your meeting with Councilor Spiro and the school and the school district about what the new rules are in terms of moving forward for safety, number one. Number two, it sounds like the YMCA is already running their membership as well as their staff through some sort of a database on a regular basis or a monthly basis that looks for criminality as well as sex offender registry. So I was very much happy to hear that portion of it. Going back to what Rick stated, though, in terms of what you'd like to do in following the state, I understand that there might be something being brought to the legislature at the state as well currently. My biggest concern is the liability. It's liability all over the place. Liability for the city of Sandpoint. It's liability for the YMCA. It's liability for their employees, questioning people who are walking in and trying to follow them to the bathrooms. You have a national policy with the YMCA as well, too. So I guess let me go back to question one, if you don't mind telling us. How did the meeting turn out, and what were the protocols that are going to be taken now for the safety of women and children at the YMCA?
Sure. I won't speak for the YMCA, Councilman Dick, but we did have a meeting. Senator Woodward, representatives from the YMCA, representatives from the school district, and some board members Monday morning, and we basically discussed the situation. I was a bit shocked that anyone would reference Sandpoint code as the driver or rationale or legal requirement to form their policy. Obviously, I read our code 5 to 10, and initially, I thought it only applied to employment. But if you read it more deeply, it actually provides potential misdemeanors and a whole lengthy slew of actions for accommodation. And if folks feel they're being discriminated against based on sexual orientation, gender, and other related areas, it involves us. So I was shocked. I went back and reviewed our code, had a brief discussion with our legal team, and I came to the conclusion that why are we involved in this? This is outside our jurisdiction, outside our lanes. So in regards to the meeting, the school district briefed us on their safety and their protocol. I don't really want to reference that because I might get it wrong. I'm going to summarize when their students are at the Y, their athletes, there are adults, coaches who, and no one else is allowed to use the bathrooms, why their athletes are changing there. Beyond that, the school district put out a press release. Senator Woodward did reference likely legislation that'll be moving through this next session. And in terms of the city, what came to my mind was all of our other bathrooms. We've got facilities at the Russell Center, Community Hall, City Beach. And, you know, this kind of opens up this broader conversation and we just need direction from the state and federal government on what is, and the Supreme Court, what is our legal obligation, responsibility here. So I think, starting tomorrow morning, I'll be visiting with Director Welker about our facilities and our legal counsel about what our responsibilities under current Supreme Court and state and federal law are. And again, my perspective is that we don't need to be involved in this conversation if we have, you know, federal and Supreme Court and state supremacy on these issues.
Okay, thank you. And then Zach, maybe you can talk to us about liability if we were to move forward with something like this that the mayor's discussing that mirrors state and federal policy code ordinance.
Well, frankly, I think if we move forward with something that didn't mirror state policy, then we would be liable. I mean, I think that even this ordinance is very deferential to state and federal law. So I think that the concept here of just making it mirror the definitions set forth in state and federal law, I don't see any significant liability with that.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say that.
Councilwoman Duquette, can I, can we let you, I think you already spoke on this. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I know, you're not wrong.
Okay, can we just hear from other council members before you go a second time?
If one of you want to speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, this is a complex issue, obviously, hot-button issue, very passionate people, and I can appreciate that. It's my understanding that there are several of our state legislators who are very motivated to take this up at the next state legislative session. And so I guess rather than rewriting our code right now, my preference would be to wait until they give us direction, since obviously they do have precedents over what we can and cannot enforce in our municipality. It's entirely likely that they could make this entire ordinance unlawful and require us to remove it from our books. So I think it's a little premature to modify it at this point.
Councilman Schreiber, just a quick question. Do you see the efficiency, though, if ours just mirrors the state? Whatever the state does will always be in compliance to, does that make sense?
It's, in theory, yes, but like I said, there could be a bill that makes all nondiscrimination ordinances invalid, in which case any work that we do between now and then is not efficient.
Any other council discussion or comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Spiro.
Appreciate all the time and all the citizens today who were going to speak. I'm sorry if I told you that. There was no public comment today. It was the mayor threw a curveball, but appreciate all your comments. And even with such a complex issue for many, I appreciate the decorum. It was very respectful from all sides that spoke. Councilman Schreiber, I do appreciate where you're coming from, and I think you spoke very eloquently on, you know, not wanting to move too hastily and seeing what the legislator does. But to some degree, we don't know what they're going to do, right? We don't always know what the Supreme Court's going to do. You're hearing people that want to see at least some change now. And Mr. Mayor, as I understand it, you're saying that we're not consistent with code. So what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to bring code next week to mirror state code. And if they don't change anything, at least we're in compliance. At least there's comfort in the community that we took action, at least to be in compliance with state code. And then after that, if new code is brought up from the state level, then we can accommodate them, you know? This, we've already had extra special meetings. What's another one? You know, it's, in my mind, being here eight years, it's not a big deal to have another meeting to discuss it. But I do want to be in clients, sorry, I do want to be in compliance with state code. And I, it is a, as Councilwoman Duquette said, it can be very complex. I don't, I don't think it's going to be something that's going to be reconciled on this dais, the philosophical religious nature of it. I mean, on a private level, I'll debate anybody about it. I'll have a great time with it in a respectful dialogue. I'll be happy to talk to anybody who wants to talk to me privately. That's no problem. But to think that we're going to figure that out here, change everybody's minds up here on the dais, I think is not going to happen, even in a, even in a public workshop about gender, I don't see that happening either. We are elected officials to, who are voted in from conservatives, left-wing, right-wing, middle-wing, chicken wing, you name it. We're up here because Sandpoint is diverse. You have different political, religious spheres that voted for us up here, and we can't represent, we can't represent all of them perfectly all the time. That is a reality. One week it's the Avril and those against it. Meanwhile, there's thousands of other citizens who may have wanted it and they just didn't show up. Tonight, we have the opposite effect of those who don't want something and we're hearing them. Next week, we might have a whole another slew of people, but we're up here as elected officials. And sometimes some things are pretty smooth, like, hey, I want the sidewalk this week. I don't want it next week. It's not necessarily a philosophical, religious type of debate. Some things that are to that level sometimes come to the dais. I'm very proud of this council that we, at least in the past eight years that I've been on council, we haven't brought, we cultivated a culture of not bringing these really complicated, controversial issues to the dais. We've kept it real. We may have had a mayor who did that, but as a council, we cultivated a really good job, I think, of focusing on Sandpoint. Sometimes these issues come to our doorstep that are very complicated and very difficult. And that's where all six of us are going to have to stand on our worldview and what we believe and vote on that come hell or high water, and that's the reality of it.
Thank you, Councilman Spiro. Just a quick correction. I don't believe that our code violates, and Zach, correct me. Any code, what it does is it involves us in a federal or state issue.
Understood.
And that's where I don't feel like we need to bring a national or federal issue into our house, so to speak.
Okay.
And if we mirrored federal and state law, if there were a discrimination claim, that individual or that business wouldn't come to us and our Human Rights Task Commission to determine, be the arbiter and potentially be subject to a misdemeanor. It would send them to their eventual remedy, which is federal or state law.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And I would echo that, Mr. Mayor. I think what our code does is it prescribes language beyond what is set forth in the state code.
So my singular goal is not to not face the issue, but just to extract us from a issue that we have no real control over. And again, it's a Supreme Court, federal, and state definition and issue that I believe is in the works right now, so.
May I share my?
If there's no one else who wants to speak and no one objects, go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Just going to say what Kyle said was that the legislature hasn't met yet for this law. So I was just also thinking, waiting, and it's not about, nobody's trying to change anybody's mind. It's not a matter of beliefs. It's a matter of the law, I guess, what's out there. That's all I'm saying.
Understood. And again, the point is if our code simply says whatever the state says is our law, then whatever the legislature does will always be current. We don't have to go back and fix things and tweak it. It'll always just be whatever the state or the feds.
That's your, is that what you're meaning to say in your amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that you're just going to stay with the state?
We're just going to mirror whatever discrimination, anti-discrimination provisions are in state and federal law. We support and adhere to those. Any other council discussion at this time? This is not an action item. All right. For the final item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206F to consider the evaluation dismissal or disponing of or to hear complaints, charges brought against the public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent, and to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications and legal opinions for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be limited, litigated, as provided in Chapter 1, Title 74 of Idaho Code. I need a motion in a second to convene.
Salute.
Second.
Moved by Spiro, second by Schreiber. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilor Howard? Councilor Spiro?
Yes.
Councilor Dick?
Yes.
Councilor Rule?
Yes.
Councilor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councilor Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I will ask everyone not participating in the session to please exit the room. And the recording will now end. Good night and thank you to everyone who attended this evening.